Let's get started.
Reporting in progress.
Welcome, everybody, to today's work session on the fiscal year 2023 budget. Really appreciate everyone being here today. Today, we'll be hearing from the mayor's office, compliance and I T, city clerk, and city treasurer. Myself and Mr. Escabel are present. We have President Royball and Dr. Aldridge online. Jen, do we have anybody else?
And Councilman Johnson and Dr. Rennie have joined us, too.
Councilman Johnson and Dr. Rennie, welcome. Good to have you. With that, Mayor, no further delay. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Happy Cinco de Mayo, Mr. Chairman.
Happy Cinco de Mayo to you, too.
So I don't have a lot to report. If you look at the mayor's budget, I think the big change in our budget is just the cost of public defenders. Our judges are working to make sure that everyone's treated according to the requirements of the law. And the thing I learned is that if the potential punishment for a person coming before the court includes jail time, they have to be offered an attorney if they can't afford one. And so we budgeted $110,400. I hope that's enough. It's been an ongoing thing. We've been averaging 100 or more arraignments a couple of times a week. We'll have over 5,000 arraignments this current fiscal year. And so there's a lot of opportunities where folks would need a public defender. This is now in the mayor's office. It was a conflict for the public defender to be in the court or in the attorney's office. Seems like he can't be the prosecutor and provide the defense. So it's been housed in the mayor's office to get away from that appearance of impropriety. You'll notice we added $2,500. We usually pay for our summer picnic through vending machines, but those funding sources aren't going to be viable into the future. And so Holly has added $2,500 so that we can pay for our summer picnic for our employees. And then I think a couple of things you'll see throughout all of our budgets, our software contracts. You know, in the old days, you used to buy your software and you owned the increase the costs. And in these inflationary times, those costs are going up. And so you'll see some significant increases in the cost of computer software and those contracts. And then I also noticed in all of our contracts, it seems like we used to have centralized copiers or whatever. We don't do that anymore. So each department has to budget for copiers. And so you'll see that throughout all of our departments. And with that, I don't have anything else to tell you unless you have questions for me.
Just one note, just for the record, Mr. Laborne is here in person. It's good to have him. And for my colleagues online, we're currently looking at pages 80 and 81 in our budget books. Mayor, I just had one question. Attorney Boster came to finance. Oh, and she's here. She came to finance on Monday and kind of talked a little bit about the increased public defender costs that you noted in your budget. Is that going, you know, in light of projections and increased costs? Do you think that that $60,400 that you've noted is going to be enough to cover?
Yeah, I think we're at $110,400 in the budget for next year. And so that's a significant increase from what we had budgeted previously. I hope that will be enough. Our attorney has changed instead of the way we used to do it. Now we have contracts and they're fixed amount. And so I think we have a better handle on that. We still have some cases though, under the old way, that are still winding their way through the process. And we're still paying those folks. I think yesterday we had one for $7,000 that came in on one of the older contracts. And there are still cases that are winding their way through the process. And hopefully by this time next year, those will all be gone and we'll be back on our contracts. And we'll have a better handle on our budget.
Thank you. And I see Attorney Boster shaking her head in the affirmative that she thinks that that'll be enough to cover. Any comments or questions from my colleagues? I see Jen waving in the back.
Dr. Aldridge has a question.
Dr. Aldridge.
Chairman White, through you to Mayor Collins. I just had two questions. One, and this may be a Robin question, but I'm guessing that the vending machines, that income hasn't been viable or we're not anticipating it will be viable enough this year to help offset costs for like the employee picnic because the building was closed. Are we anticipating that those revenues will return in future years? Or have we given up on the idea of vending machines?
Yeah, according to Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Aldridge, according to Holly, we're not anticipating the vending revenues will be enough in the future. And in order to be able to continue to have this, we need a budget for it.
Okay, and then a follow-up question, Chairman White?
Go ahead.
I had also, I know that in visiting with you, that we provide a vehicle for your use. And I was just looking at the fleet fuel, labor, and parts inventory under InterCity, where we budgeted only $1,000. And I'm just wondering if that includes the fuel cost? I know that you're out and about in the community a lot, which I think the entire council would say is a benefit for sure to the city and to the council and connecting with large communities, like for instance, your trip to Casper. I'm just wondering if that's going to be enough or if we need to increase that line item? Or maybe that expense comes from another budget? I'm not seeing it anywhere else in this particular budget for your office.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Dr. Aldridge, I don't drive a city vehicle typically during the summertime in the nice months. I drive my car. My car doesn't do very well in the wintertime, so I do use a city vehicle in the off season. So I, or the winter season. So I do believe it is probably going to get me pretty close to what I need to be.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Jen? Hearing none, we'll move on to compliance and I T.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you guys today. It's always good to be here and I appreciate the support over the last three years as we've developed the compliance department. Couple of things I wanted to share with you today were that the requests that we have across the board generally come from daily operational needs and/or it is directly related to salaries within our staffing. The number one we'll discuss first will be the building department. And then looking at that, most of what you're seeing there with the code compliance inspector, the chief building official, all the way down to our technicians and our inspectors, really come from certifications and competencies that they've completed over the last year, as well as continue to work forward to that. One of the main goals and primary goals that we had as we worked going forward with our building official and our set moving forward in terms of a succession plan, we wanted to make sure that our deputy and our assistant deputy really had those certifications to drive that forward. And then looking at our inspectors, getting them the same kind of certifications at the same time. So we'd never find ourselves in a position to not have a chief building official on staff all the time. So we're going to continue with that type of process and working through that. Our building permit technicians are the same kind of a concept there, that as you do not educate them or they don't participate in educational processes, we fall behind the times. And then we're not up to the standard of the community or the expectation of the community as we begin to service them with future building projects and/or future opportunities as well. So that would cover those in terms of the requests there. The biggest request that we had across the board and through all of the compliance division was for the nuisance abatement line and looking at what it takes to really take care of those properties. I've been with you folks now for five years in this conversation. And we have cleaned up significantly many, many blooded properties in this community. And it would not go unnoticed without recognizing the council's support for that. Because without your support and having those funding, we would never be able to get that done. What we know today and what we have in front of us today are several properties that we know are on the pipe coming down for this next year. It will take that. The average concept of cleanup is between $8,000 and $10,000 for some of these properties. Earlier today, I sent you guys the calendar compliance report for the calendar year. And I sent that out to you guys before this meeting a couple of hours ago that really demonstrates some of the pictures of the things that we deal with every single day. And we want to be good partners for our other divisions in the city. We really work with each and every one of them in terms of how we operate with H R or building or nuisance or risk management. But specifically within compliance, within the nuisance side of it, without that support or without that funding, we just can't do it. And we really think that $70,000 might not be enough, but it's a good fetch of what we're kind of looking at going forward. If I move forward now to the I T department a little bit, I think it's important to understand again where that's kind of coming from. Your director of I T and your assistant director of I T have been with us for an insignificant amount of time, 25-plus years for one of those individuals. And I think it would be a detriment to the city to lose either one of those gentlemen. They're very dedicated. They're here with us every single day. They go above and beyond. They operate a 24-hour hotline. I think that we do a good job in providing those services. But we must also be able to pay them and retain them so that we don't find ourselves in a situation without that scope of talent. The largest ask in that division was network development. And I think it's important to understand the widespread geographic area that we occupy as a city and how we provide those services to multiple areas of the city, including our police department as well as our fire. You know, it's very unique in that we have a team that develops that type of land opportunity and keeps that infrastructure into place for us every single day. The additional budget request is to earmark a line item specific to types of development projects and maintenance purposes. We cannot do continued maintenance. And what we've identified in the past is that I T, the infrastructure, is much like a trash can. It's bottomless. It just goes in and keeps on going. But the reality is you have to fund it because if you don't have it, you cannot operate. And then looking at understanding the new software that we want to provide for the city overall, that's going to be a big undertaking, additional time for our staff as well. We just really need to support that. And so I think that's, those were our biggest asks. If I move to animal control, we, go ahead, sir.
Hold one second, Eric. I just want to, before we go to animal control.
Sure.
Just see if there are any questions first on compliance or I T. Jen's waving in the back.
Dr. Aldridge, you can go ahead.
Dr. Aldridge, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chairman White. Eric, I just had a question on the I T piece, the $677,000 for computer software maintenance. Is that taking into consideration the new software that is being considered? That would be basically pull all of our systems together so they can talk to each other? Or is that just to maintain what we currently have?
Go ahead, Eric.
Chairman White, through you to Dr. Aldridge. Dr. Aldridge, that's correct. That is not the new citywide software. That is just to maintain what we currently have in place. The new citywide software is not included in that number.
Great, thank you.
Go ahead, Robin. That seems, boy, 677K. I know things are expensive, but could you shed some light on that, please, Robin?
Well, Tyler might need to shed some light on some of this. The city software, the E R P system we have currently is about $110,000 of that. And we are keeping that in this budget because we're not going to be fully operational for almost two years for our new software. And as well, it'll also be coming out of the ARPA funding. So for those two years.
The $110,000?
The $110 is in here. This is for our current software.
Okay.
The new software will be 200 and some, but it's going to be in the ARPA funding in a different fund.
Okay, good. Thanks for the clarification. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, through you.
Mr. Escabel.
I did have a question back on compliance, on the abatements. Are we continuing to still place liens on homeowners to try and recapture that?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Escabel. Absolutely. We have to do our best to recover the taxpayer funds and be a good service of those funds. The problem that we have is that we haven't really perfected that process yet. And we don't really have all the tools in the tool bag statutorily to collect those funds. So we do the best that we can to the point that, you know, we find ourselves either in a settlement process or at the end of the road. But absolutely, to answer your question, we'll always go after our funds expended.
And just to follow up, when was the last time we actually recovered any abatement money through a lien process?
Mr. Chairman, through you. Councilman Escabel, we just recently had one, I believe it was about a month and a half ago, for 50%, about $12,500.
And it'd been quite a while since we captured any before that one?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Councilman Escabel, we had no success prior to this. But you have to understand, compliance has just absorbed nuisance in the last three years. So we're still learning that methodology.
Then we'll try and get you some more tools.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just had a meeting yesterday with a gentleman who makes his living doing this, acquiring properties. And he had some very really good suggestions for the attorney and I on how we might be able to use our lien process to be able to recover money and to get properties cleaned up permanently. So we're on top of that, Mr. Escabel. I think we have some opportunities that I had not, had not occurred to me in the past that we might be able to start using. And so we have a gentleman who's in this community that's going to help consult us through that process. And we'll, we're going to take a shot. I think the first one we have is a property we abated last year where we had a burnt trailer. And we had to go in and tear that trailer out of there. And we have a lien on that property. And we're going to, we're going to make a run at that one first and see how it works. And if that works, we'll have a, maybe the secret sauce to doing more in the future.
That's good news. I thought you were going to tell me you met with a gentleman who made a living out of being a nuisance. So I'm glad, I'm glad there's more positive aspects out of that. Eric, on compliance, and I think Mr. Laborne, did you need, wanted to make a comment, sir? I get the 70K. I know that Ward One representatives, myself, Mr. Royball, and Mr. Laborne have all been very much interested in this subject. There seems to be a lot of bad actors that we're dealing with that have properties in our ward. And not just in our ward, but other wards as well. And they're repeated offenders. And they seem to thumb their nose at whatever codes and mechanisms are currently in place to deal with them. And it's very frustrating for the surrounding neighbors in those neighborhoods. And I know Mr. Laborne and I are working, I think we all know, a specific area. And the neighbors are really just kind of fed up about it. And we hear from them all the time and we tell them continually, we're working on it. We're working on it. And we want to be able to demonstrate to them that we are working on it and making some progress. So I get the fact that that 70K is a kind of a big amount when you first look at it, but something I surely support. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Laborne.
Thank you. I certainly support it as well. I know that it'll go away when we start dealing with the issues, particularly asbestos abatement and removal of material. But in the discussion we just had here, and having had many discussions with the compliance department about these issues, would it be possible for us to have a report of the various considerations? For instance, does that trailer removal come with a property that's mortgaged?
Mr. Chairman, through you, if we're speaking about a particular project that we have in the pipe right now, yes, there is a mortgage on that particular piece of property. And yes, there are multiple violations there.
No, I'm talking about the one that was removed that was disposed of, I believe the mayor mentioned earlier.
Yes, yes. So yeah, there's a lien currently placed on that property.
Is there a mortgage on that property?
I don't believe there is.
Well, I think that's the really significant difference, isn't it? I think, I look forward to finding out how that's going to be enforced. But as we all recall, there was a posse that came down to tell us that the sky was going to fall and the banks were going to close if we acted on a property that had a mortgage on it. And that is really, of course, part of the effort that the Wyoming Association of Municipalities is doing with the number. I mean, this is a statewide issue, but it's particularly a Ward One issue. So I'm just wondering if we can't have a brief but correct analysis of what's happened? Because as we go back and you and I go back on this quite a ways to the initiation of the so-called Fight the Blight, there, I think all the council and anyone else that's interested would benefit from knowing what we learned as we went along. Because it is, it's easy to see and understand the problem. And that is a problem that the neighbors are, and anyone else that's interested will tell you. But when you plunge into the questions of the priority, of the filing, of the, all of those issues, and I'm particularly referencing the one that you just mentioned where we did get some of the money back for the shacks across the street here. But, and I'm glad we did, and I fully support that. But I think there was some lessons learned there that ought to be documented. And I do want to mention this at this time, since my colleague who's chairing this meeting brought it up. When we have an individual or a corporation that consistently and absolutely flouts the existing remedies that we have in the police department and in the compliance department, and keeps doing the same things over and over again, and I'm directing this question to the city attorney. Where does this come, and I'd be glad to discuss it with you later. When does this become a public nuisance? And what does Wyoming Public Nuisance Law have for us to help us with it? Where you have so many multiple problems. You have people living in it. You have people committing crimes in the neighborhood. You have junk. You have a real deterioration of the neighborhood to the extent that people move out. And then those of us that represent that area, I'm just really tired of saying we can't, we don't know, we don't have a direct action that brings together all of these elements that we can act on. Because, yeah, and I appreciate you going and towing those cars. And I appreciate the police department going and investigating things. But overall, and I think that we have an excellent problem case here that we can work on and build to other situations where people get so far out of any reasonable approach that we're going to have to take some very serious action. So I look forward to that. And I certainly understand all the efforts that go into some of these things with people that just will not act responsibly or respond responsibly. And we have to do the kinds of things we're doing right now on the trailer park. So, but again, what I'm, what I'm asking for is some kind of a report and analysis of the actions that we took and where they went and how successful they were. Because we really have to build to the point, and certainly the $70,000, it'll come into play, where we are going to have to deal with a mortgaged property and say, look, you know, where does our responsibility, where is our health and safety fall in the legal system? If it continues to fall behind a mortgage that's held by who knows who and who knows where, I think we'll be having this same conversation next year and the year after and the year after that because we've done that. So I don't want you to get me wrong. I appreciate your efforts. And I think we've correctly increased and assisted your department in doing that work. It's just the magnitude of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laborne. Any comments or questions on I T? Jen? Okay. Go ahead with the animal control. Big topic recently.
Lots of work to do, lots of work. Mr. Chairman and council, again, thank you. Animal control is our next conversation that we'll have here this afternoon. And we didn't have any additional requests for additional, just died. Additional funding. We didn't have anything like that. We're pretty confident we can continue to offer services at the same caliber that we did this year. One of the nice things and one of the challenges also was that we've created a pretty good partnership, I think, with the Cheyenne Animal Shelter and providing a service to the community with officers that have a national certification, national training level. That's first for us, and that's good. I believe it's very much something that we wanted to see in our community. The second thing that we also have done is brought the vehicles back into a service manual, a service contract opportunity with our own fleet maintenance. They were in bad repair when we took them back from the shelter, but they're in great shape now. We're back on operation 100%. We have all the tools and resources that it takes to do that. Again, it's just a matter of us learning that cadence and how that operates as a municipality versus being in a private relationship. But I think the public-private partnership that we have with them and the relationship that we've developed with the county is working well. So we have no additional requests at this time.
Thanks, Eric. Any comments or questions on animal control?
Go ahead, Dr. Aldridge.
Go ahead, Dr. Aldridge.
Thank you, Chairman White. Eric, I was just curious as to, I'm looking at this total of $360,476 to provide, well, and I guess $429,000 actually, to provide this service. And I think you guys have done an amazing job, especially considering that, you know, literally you had to pivot overnight and put together a system to handle this. But I'm just wondering, I believe that we're still involved in a current M O U with the Cheyenne Animal Shelter and that we were paying them what equaled out to over $800,000 a year. I'm just wondering if we can anticipate a reduction in that amount in this upcoming year since we're now handling all of our own animal control?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Through you to Dr. Aldridge. No, I don't believe that we will see any changes. We've spent a lot of time talking with the animal shelter. And the number that they gave us to just do the sheltering part of the contract is the $800,000. We pay 500 and some change. And I apologize, I don't remember the exact number. The county pays the difference of that based on our population. And I'm not sure exactly how that number came to bay, but pretty much that's where it is. The analysis that we did was looking to see what would it cost for us to provide that service as a municipal agency, the sheltering part of it? And that number was higher than the $800,000. And so the decision was made that that was the better of the two, the two choices before us. We didn't have a choice in animal control. The animal shelter decided not to provide that service anymore. And so we had no choice but to pick that service up.
So as a follow-up, Chairman White, it sounds to me like when they came to us last year and said that they needed a million dollars this year, and then they thought it would be 1.2 the following year, it sounds like we're already at the 1.2 between what we're providing in monies as well as what we're providing in services.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
What the county contributes.
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
And it doesn't take too long to get to that amount when you're working on cases where you're confiscating 63 large breed dogs in one instance. Robin, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say we are paying the shelter $528,000 for sheltering and then obviously nothing for animal control. So that's our contribution.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Escabel.
I don't know if it's just something that I've noticed recently, but animal control's broadened more than just cats and dogs. We had a mountain lion in the middle of town, you know? So, yeah, it's just that comment. And all of the kind of varmints are starting to come into town. I don't know if it's because of urban sprawl or what's going on, but. I don't know if it's because of urban sprawl or what's going on, but raccoons.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman Escobal, just for your knowledge, we partner also with the wildlife from the state of Wyoming. So they handle all the newcomers to the community, the bears, the mountain lions. So our staff has to do with those, but we do deal with 150-pound dogs and 63 at a time. It's fun for us.
Not to mention the 10 birds.
And a partridge in a pear tree.
Yes. If there are no other comments or questions on animal control, we'll go ahead and move forward. Go ahead, Eric.
And that wraps it up for us, Mr. Chairman. We don't have anything else, sir, to present today other than the animal control, the nuisance in building.
Great. That's quite enough, I'm sure. Thank you for all the information, Eric. Chris, we'll move on to City Clerk's office.
Okay, Mr. Chair, Chris Jones, City Clerk. We don't have a whole lot of changes in our budget. We have a couple of increases that are just due to annual increases, software maintenance. Our copier expense line item did increase because of the changes that were brought on from that. And then I just have one salary increase that I have requested that is for a promotion of one of my licensing tax, and that involves just some extra responsibilities and a reclass of that position. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments or questions for City Clerk's office? Mr. Laborn?
Yes, I was curious, since you lost your, I'm not sure exactly what his title was, but the property evaluator. What was his title?
He was land technician.
Land technician. How do you foresee that being handled since it's pretty much an important area?
Mr. Chair, through you, I've had discussions with the city treasurer and the mayor, and they're aware of our deficit in that area. We are trying to find alternative funding mechanisms to try to replace that individual, whether it be a part-time or through a contract position. But it has been a bit challenging since he retired. It's a very complex process, so there's a learning curve involved. And unfortunately, current staff is not up to speed on that, including myself. But we are learning and limping along, and I'm confident we will find a solution to that at some point here.
Well, I don't see a line item to fund that solution.
That is correct. I did request that, and as I said, we've had multiple discussions, and I think we're looking at different funding areas, hopefully, to replace that position.
Like what kind of different funding?
Robin, can, Robin or the mayor, can you?
Mr. Chairman, so we are hoping when we do our review in six months that we will be able to fund some of these requests that we weren't able to fund. So that's one of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, other comments or questions for the City Clerk's office? We do have one.
Dr. Aldridge, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman White. I was just curious, Chris, I'm looking at your advertising line, and I know that you had worked really hard to do less, or to make legal notices less lengthy over the last couple of years. And I see that we've left that amount flat, and I'm just wondering if that's realistic considering all of the, I mean, I think that this council's been fairly active, and I just want to make sure that we're funding that sufficiently enough to make sure that all of our public notices and things are able to take place.
Mr. Chair, through you, to Dr. Aldridge. Yeah, we did leave it flat for a couple of reasons. Yes, we have had a lot of additional stuff. For instance, this next agenda, I think we have an additional 14 ordinances which will need to be published. So in line with that, the deputy clerk and I are looking at a possibility of shortening the publication for the minutes. And we will be working with the mayor and city attorney in the near future to discuss that, that would help offset a little bit of that budget. And again, we try to just keep to what is required statutorily to be published. And with, along with that, I would mention that we're able, for ordinance amendments, we are able to only publish a summary of the amendment, not the entire ordinance. So I believe that's going to provide some cost-saving in that area as well.
Great, thank you.
Other comments or questions for City Clerk? Hearing none. We'll move on to City Treasurer. Robin?
Hi, good afternoon, City Council members. I'm Robin Lockman, City Treasurer. The city treasurer's budget is just one general fund division, excuse me, the city's treasurer budget has one general fund division, which is finance. As you will see on page 154, my 2023 request is $847,000. This is up $55,000 from the current year. We have eight employees in the finance division. This staffing number has stayed consistent over the past 15 years, except for moving the grants manager to the mayor's department in 2020 and then returning it to my department in 2022. I feel my department is adequately staffed, but we will be facing some challenges in the next couple of years. First, we have agreed to pay our seasonal employees twice a month from May until August to help with recruitment efforts starting this month. Our seasonal staff sometimes do not receive their first paycheck for up to six weeks after they start, based on how our monthly payroll dates occur. For example, if someone's hired on the 20th of May, they will not receive their first payroll check until June 30th. This is a deterrent for many of our seasonal job applicants, and I support this change. However, this is going to essentially double my payroll accountant's workload from May until August of each year, so it'll be a challenge to get that done. Also, if approved by the governing body, the city will be going through a major ERP software conversion over the next two years, which will place huge demands on my staff as we have four software programs that are going to be replaced.
Four? Four different programs?
Four different, and that's just for mine, yeah.
Okay.
And for the $55,000 increase that I'm requesting, $44,000 of it is payroll-related. Of that amount, $31,400 is the result of the $1.50 per hour salary increase plus benefits for eight individuals on my staff. That was approved by the governing body in January. Additionally, $2.6000 of that increase is related to the reinstatement of longevity pay, also approved in January for two of my employees. And there is also a director salary increase request for my position in an amount of $9,880 plus benefits as part of the overall director salary compensation plan the mayor is proposing. I have $11,000 in other requests. The first is related to training. Our training budget in 2020 was $12,000, and obviously through the cuts we sustained, it was cut to 92% to $1,000 in 2021. CPAs are required to take 40 hours of continuing professional education each year, which is very expensive. To maintain our licenses in both Brandon and my positions require having a CPA license. I have asked for a $1,000 increase in that line item to bring it to 2,000. That'll allow Brandon and I at least to take some online training for our licenses. It won't allow anything for the rest of my staff, though. I have also increased professional services $500 to cover the cost of DocuSign subscription that TJ uses, my purchasing manager. Using this not only saves time, but it saves a great deal of postage and other costs associated with mailing these contracts and professional service agreements, and then we have to wait for them to be returned to us. So it cuts the time down and the cost. I did decrease office supplies by the same amount because being electronic and working from home for six months, we just really don't use paper and paper clips and those kinds of things as much as we used to. I am requesting an increase of $400 due to inflationary factors for printing. My office does all the city printing of all the letterhead, all the envelopes, check stock and those kinds of things. $400 is also a request to increase for our legal advertising for my department's initiated RFPs, like audit services and those kinds of things. And then finally, I'm asking for an increase of $9,130 for software. Of that, $6,000 will pay for our new contract safe software. In the past, the city has not done a good job in keeping track of our revenue contracts, especially those that have expired and have not been renewed. Knowing this, over the past fiscal year, my staff and I have made a concerted effort to review every single governing body agenda posted on the city's website since 2008 to search for any approved contracts that affect revenue, including easements, reimbursements, leases, franchise agreements, right-of-way agreements, grants and sponsorships. We found at least 15 contracts that require renewals but were never done, plus many more that my office hasn't received fully executed copies yet and that have not been billed correctly. This project is still a work in progress, but what this software will do is organize this effort, allowing us to keep all of our contracts in one place, send key date reminders, search and filter documents instantly to find what we need and never miss deadlines for billing. I'm also requesting $3,100 to pay for lease accounting software that provides functionalities needed to maintain compliance with the Governmental Accounting Standards Board Number 87, which basically requires any lease that the city pays for or receives. We have to do complex amortization calculation for those, so this is an audit requirement that we have to do. That covers my finance division. I do want to cover the miscellaneous division, too, if there's no other question, if there's questions on finance division.
Stand by. Any comments or, yes, go ahead, Jen. Jen's beating me to the punch today. Go ahead.
Dr. Aldridge, go ahead.
Chairman White, through you, to Treasurer Lockman, I'm just curious if, in looking at your computer software request, I'm wondering if we have anything right now that tracks our grants? I know that you talked about a contract safe contract management system for contracts, but I, now that we have a grant writer and we're really pursuing more grants probably than we have in recent years, I'm just wondering if we have any type of a grant management software package that's included in this budget request? And if we don't, if that might be something we would like to consider, because keeping track of all of the deadlines and reporting deadlines and money coming in and coming out is hugely important in our success in getting future grants.
Robin?
Mr. Chairman, through you, that's a great question, Dr. Aldridge. We actually, this year purchased, it's called Amplifund, grant management software. Luckily, the American Rescue Plan funds were able to pay for this for one year. So next year, I will be coming back to you for those funds. But it's a great software package that Renee uses, and all the departments put in all their grant requests into this software, and it tracks it through the whole process. And so I approve all the applications, and it's wonderful, so it's a great.
And how much, how much is that a year?
I believe it's like $30,000. It's expensive.
So we won't see it this year, but we'll see it next year.
Budget's correct.
Great. Any other comments, Mr. Escobal?
Just a follow-up. When we first started talking about getting a grants manager, I looked on the revenue page, $603,000 is what the revenue was through grants. So hopefully, we'll even see that go up this year.
May I respond?
Please.
So this, that's only just for our police contract, for our school district officers. We have actually four other grant funds. So we have our youth alternative grant funds, our local grant funds, federal grant funds, transit. So we have a lot of grants in those other funds that are just not reflected in this budget because I do those in September during the reappropriation. There's millions of dollars.
Oh, great.
I think, and I really need to applaud the mayor and all of council, I think the, having the vision to procure a grants manager for the city has proven to be a very wise investment on the part of everybody. Renee is really stellar. So, yeah, that was, that was a good, good work by all there. Any other comments or questions from council on city treasurer? Anything?
I just wanted to cover the miscellaneous division quickly.
Please, go ahead.
It's on page 158.
158.
And this division covers citywide type of expenses, and so I developed a budget for it, but, and I'm kind of responsible for it. So we're asking for $180,409 in additional requests for this budget. What that encompasses is $2,000 for our audits increasing in costs for fiscal year 2022. Postage, obviously, is going up. It's already increased twice. It's increased in August of 2021, and less than a year later, in July of 2022, they're already increasing it again. So $2,000 there, $11,000 for higher natural gas and utility costs that I already talked about yesterday, $15,000 for payroll processing software. And so I kind of talked about this earlier. We're going to be paying our seasonals four times, twice a month for four months. And then also, there's a 4.3 inflationary cost that our, that company is charging us. $40,000 for our annual bond parking payment. This, now there's an offset decrease in interest cost of $1,791. If you look at page 40 of the budget book, when you get a chance, it shows the amortization schedule for our bonds. They'll be paid off in 2028, which is coming quickly, actually.
I think we'll all be happy when that day comes.
Definitely. $79,700 is the increase for the general fund for our liability and property insurance. And then our transit program is requiring a $100,000 match this year. We've been blessed for the last two years to have that, the COVID grant funding that paid 100%, but that's going to be ending. The $100,000 is still less, and generally, before we had COVID, it was about $300,000 match requirement. So still less, but we have to add that in. And then Stephanie asked for a decrease of $8,000 in the construction, attorney fees line item. And telecommunications fortunately decreased $42,000. I reported to you that we, the IT department did a audit with our telecommunications program, and it saved $64,000 total for the whole city. So that was a really great thing that they did. And then our general election expenses are going to be about $17,005 less than our last one.
What would you attribute that to?
Well, it was the six penny election, so I don't know if that was more expenses. I'm not sure. But I use the same amount that was used for the 2020 general election. And that's all I have for that.
Thanks, Robin. Dr. Aldridge?
Thank you, Chairman White. Robin, I, through you, Chairman White, to Robin, I am just curious if maybe we want to reconsider the election expense if we're looking at a seventh penny tax election? Or would you, is the thought to maybe do that in the following year? I know we had talked about doing that, and one of the ideas was to help fund civic center refurbishing, and that was something that was discussed about when constituents came to talk about the six penny sales tax and the projects we had listed on that. And I know there's been some interest and concern about whether that would pass or not, but I'm just wondering if it's, if that's something we should be considering budgeting for.
Go ahead, Robin.
Mr. Chairman, there won't be time for, in this fiscal, next fiscal year, to do that because we have to, you know, to be got on the general election ballot, we'd have to be doing it now. So it would probably be a 2024 expense if that's the direction the council wants to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions for, on miscellaneous? Well, hearing none. Thank you all. Thanks, Chris, Eric, Robin and the mayor. We will pick this up again at noon tomorrow. Thank you.